Good morning, Steve.
Good morning, everyone. The regular meeting of the Desert Community College District Board of Trustees is now called to order at 9:38 a.m. You may join today's meeting in person via Zoom webinar or watch the live stream from the College of the Desert YouTube channel. These links are accessible by visiting the College of the Desert homepage. We will now proceed with the roll call. Acting President Garcia, do you mind proceeding with the roll call?
Sure. Student trustee Robles.
Here.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton.
Yes.
Trustee Meyer.
Yes.
Trustee Perez.
Yes.
Trustee Kinnaman.
Here.
At this time, I would like to invite trustee Meyer to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. I just noticed that, sorry. Thank you. Item 2.01, Board Agenda. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2B2, the Board may take action on items of business not appearing on the posted agenda upon a determination by two-thirds vote of the Board, or if less than two-thirds of the members are present, a unanimous vote of those present that there is a need to take immediate action and that the need for action came to the attention of the local agency subsequent to the agenda being posted as specified. 2.02, Confirmation of Agenda. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the agenda for March 21st, 2025? Seeing none, the agenda stands as amended, or stands as it is. Next, we have Public Comments, item 3.01. Request to address the Board of Trustees regarding the regular agenda items. Do we have any requests?
Board Chair Kinnaman, we have not received any public comment requests at this time.
Okay, thank you. Public participation is allowed and will be accepted in person by email to otp@collegeofthedesert.edu during the meeting and submitted for the record, or by using the Raise Your Hand function by joining the Zoom link. Pursuant to the District Administrative Procedure 2345, each speaker will be allowed a maximum of three minutes per topic. Fifteen minutes shall be the maximum time allotment for public speakers on any one subject regardless of the number of speakers at any one board meeting. At the discretion of a majority of the Board, these limits may be extended. All comments must be submitted or brought forward prior to the end of the Public Comments section. As an additional note, this item is intended for public, for members of the public who wish to speak regarding regular agenda items. An opportunity to address the Board on matters not related to the agenda will be available during 12.01 of today's agenda. And I got premature a few minutes ago. Do we have any public comments or questions?
We have not received any public comments again.
All right, thank you, I appreciate it. Item 4, Public Updates, Employee Appointments. Acting President Garcia, can you please introduce this item?
All up, Director Tanya Wilson.
There we go. For classified appointments, we have Cece Yamaguchi. She will be the Nursing Program Assistant. We, for our faculty appointments, we have Amber McCartney. She's our instructor for nursing remediation. I failed to mention, if you are here, please stand up. And then our leadership appointments, Caitlin Blank, our Director of Kinesiology and Athletics, and our first female athletic director at the college. And then we also have Raymond Chip West III. He is the interim Vice President of Administrative Services. And that concludes our new appointments for this month.
So we welcome you all and hope you enjoy your time with your colleagues here. I know I always have. Item 4.02, Proclamation, National Library Week. Acting President Garcia, can you introduce this item?
Yeah, I'd like to call for Jen Ann Denning to read the proclamation, Associate Professor of Library and Information Services. Hi, Jen.
Professor Jen? I'm sorry, so I made a, so I made a little change. It was cut off at the bottom. So, but okay, I'm just going to continue and read the rest as well. All right, so, whereas libraries are not just about what they have for people, but what they do for and with people. Whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that foster a sense of belonging and community. Whereas libraries of all types are at the heart of their cities, towns, schools, and campuses, serving their communities. Whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions, and library workers and librarians fuel efforts to better their communities, campuses, and schools. Whereas librarians are leaders in their institutions and organizations, in their communities, in the nation, and in the world. Whereas librarians continue to lead the way in leveling the playing field for all who seek information and access to technologies. Whereas libraries and librarians look beyond their traditional roles and provide transformative opportunities for education, employment, entrepreneurship, empowerment, and engagement, as well as new services that connect closely with patrons' needs. Whereas libraries and librarians lead their communities in innovation, providing STEM programming, maker spaces, and access and training for new technologies. Whereas, to adopt, to adapt to our changing world, libraries are expanding their resources and continuing to meet the needs of their patrons. Whereas libraries are cornerstones of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all. Whereas libraries are pioneers, supporting democracy and affecting social change with a commitment to providing equitable access to information for all library users regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. Whereas libraries lead in working with diverse communities, including people of color, immigrants, and people with disabilities, offering services and educational resources that transform communities, open minds, and promote inclusion and diversity. Whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Trustees proclaim April 6 through 12, 2025 National Library Week. They encourage all residents to visit the library this week and explore what's new at your library and engage your librarian because of you and our library workers. Libraries transform. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Associate Professor Ann Denning. Appreciate it. Proclamation 4.03, Desert Community College District Month. Acting President Garcia.
I'd like to ask Dean Maldonado to forward with this item.
Thank you, President Martinez Garcia. It is my pleasure to introduce Felipe Robles, the reader of the proclamation for Desert Community College District Month. Felipe is a first-generation returning student working hard to complete a degree in kinesiology. He's been an honor roll student throughout his time in college and has been working hard to retrain his mind in the ways of a scholar. Felipe has held multiple leadership positions representing students on the College of the Desert soccer team, the Associated Students of College of the Desert as the Officer of Communications, and now as the district student trustee. Hard work is something he does not stray away from, working at the Marx Art Center as well as being an employee in the hospitality industry to fund his education. His goal is to be employed in the soccer industry where he can become a proponent for positive change through sport. It is my pleasure to welcome Felipe Robles to the dais to read the proclamation of Desert Community College District Month.
Thank you, Dean Maldonado. Whereas, community and technical colleges across the United States have played an invaluable role in expanding access to higher education, with nearly half of all undergraduate students in the nation currently enrolled in community colleges. And whereas, by offering affordable and accessible educational opportunities, community and technical colleges empower every motivated student to pursue post-secondary education. These institutions, embedded in the communities they serve, provide a wide range of programs and specialized training for over 1,000 occupations. And whereas, College of the Desert serves as a sole two-year college within the Desert Community College District, reflecting the diversity and dynamic growth of the Coachella Valley. The community has witnessed its transformation into a pillar of educational excellence. And whereas, College of the Desert delivers outstanding educational programs in basic skills, career education, certificate programs, transfer preparation, associate degrees, non-credit, and distance education, all of which undergo continuous evaluation and enhancement. These programs and services foster student success, learning, and achievement while contributing to the vitality of the Desert Community College District, its surrounding areas, and beyond. Whereas, College of the Desert stands as a hub of collaboration and innovation, driving educational enrichment, economic development, and an enhanced quality of life within the Coachella Valley and neighboring communities. Whereas, Desert Community College District trustees are dedicated leaders who contribute to the global higher education community through their roles. And whereas, in recognition of the critical role that community and technical colleges play within our educational system, Congress authorized and President Ronald Reagan issued Proclamation 5418 in 1985, establishing National Community College Month. Now therefore, the Desert Community College District Board of Trustees hereby proclaims April 2025 as Desert Community College District Month, celebrating the college's invaluable contributions to education, community development, and student success.
Thank you, trustee Robles. Our next item are minutes, approval of regular meeting minutes. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the regular meeting minutes of February 21st, 2025? Okay? If there's no corrections to the minutes, they stand approved as presented. Item 5.02, Approval of Special Meeting Minutes. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the regular or the special meeting minutes of February 21st, 2025? Okay, if there's no corrections to the minutes, they stand approved as presented. Reports, Associated Students of College of the Desert.
Good morning, Board of Trustees. I'm pleased to report that a recent Club Rush event. How do I turn it on?
Zip, wrap.
Push this up a little bit if you want.
Oh, just, okay, gotcha. That good?
Yeah.
Perfect. Good morning, Board of Trustees. I'm pleased to report that our recent Club Rush event was an incredible success. The event brought together many students and student club organizations, and attracted significant participation from students and faculty alike. Club Rush is meant to, meant for students to engage with campus life, learn about various clubs available, and get involved. By this metric, it was an incredible success. It was great to see so many students connecting with their peers and discovering new opportunities for campus involvement. I would highly recommend any member of the Board attend the Fall Club Rush for the benefit of the Board and students. This month, ASCOD will be holding one of its regularly scheduled meetings at the Indio Campus. This offsite meeting is an effort to give more students from COD's offsite campuses a voice in our meetings, improving our ability to properly represent all COD students. Meeting in India will allow us to hear directly from our Indio students and discuss ways to strengthen student life across all campuses. Lastly, ASCOD representatives attended the American Student Association of California Community Colleges Conference. This conference provide our team with valuable leadership development opportunities and the chance to connect with student leaders from across the nation. We are currently working to implement what we learned from this experience to improve our student representation here at College of the Desert. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton, can you please turn on your mic?
Oh. The date, that so us board members can attend your Indio, I'm really happy to hear that you're doing it out in the eastern valley. When is the date?
It's the Monday after tonight, so it'll be the 30th of the first, I believe it's the 31st of March, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. at every campus. The room has not yet been decided, but it will be posted as all areas. If you have any questions, email me or tell me the agenda.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on with our reports, College of the Desert Foundation, Catherine Abbott, our Executive Director of the Foundation, is she with us?
Kathy Abbott is not here, but she did provide a report, and it's included in the record.
Okay, great thing. Thank you, Irene. California School Employees Association is our President Omar Higgin. Come on up, please. And while you're doing that, we'll let the record show that our birthday trustee has arrived, trustee Oden.
I am so sorry.
You're good.
But I won't explain now.
All right, Omar, sorry. Whenever you're ready.
Good morning, Acting Superintendent President Martinez Garcia, Board of Trustees, and Vice Presidents. CSEA would like to extend a warm welcome to Interim VP Chip West, and we want to send a huge thank you for jumping in quickly with all the recent heating issues. February flew by quickly. It is hard to believe that in a couple weeks, we will start welcoming our 2025 graduating high school students for three Fridays of high school visit days. And in two months, we will be in the middle of final exams and assisting with ceremonies honoring our own graduating students. It takes a dedicated team to make all of this happen. CSEA members, faculty, and leadership working together to provide support and recognition for our current and future students. Last month, some of our members participated in CPR, AED, First Aid, and ALICE classes that were offered by our Public Safety Department. Thank you for bringing these vital training classes back to campus and empowering all staff. We strongly suggest that the college continue, continue these classes at every campus. There continue to be vacant positions. These vacancies, there continue to be many vacant classified positions. These vacancies are impacting assistance for our students and leadership, delays in receiving daily mail, order backups in the print shop, and M&amp;O chasing electrical outages surges on a daily basis. Some of these vacancies have been open for years. Our classified staff are continuing to work hard to keep up with the daily request and assist with many events, activities on campus. They should not be saddled with any extra workload because of taking time off for personal necessity, sickness, or a well-deserved vacation. In closing, CSEA would like to remind you that March is International Women's Month. CSEA would like to recognize all of the ladies who support our students on a daily basis, and those who also serve on our E-Board and as union stewards, building captains, and site reps. To these dedicated coworkers, mothers, grandmothers, sisters, aunts, and veterans, CSEAs says thank you for all that you have done and continue to do. We appreciate you. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Again, thank you. College of Desert Adjunct Association, no report, I.
Board Chair Kinnaman, we did not receive a report from CODA for this month.
Okay, thank you. College of Desert Faculty Association, Oceana Collins.
We did receive a report from CODFA, and that report has been included in the record. Oceana is not here to read her report this month.
Okay, thank you very much. And then Academic Senate, Corbin Wild.
All right. Do I have to press anything? Am I good? Sweet, thank you. All right, so today I want to take a few minutes to update you on two important resolutions that are later happening on your agenda during the instruction portion of your meeting. These were recently passed by Academic Senate. One is focused on protecting the integrity of our classrooms, and the other on making course materials more affordable for our students. These resolutions reflect the hard work of our faculty and directly support our accreditation standards. The specific ACCJC standards are referenced at the end of this report. I'm not going to read them because it's a lot of like numbers, but it's on the paper copy you should have. First, I want to talk about fraudulent enrollments, or as we sometimes call them, bot enrollments. This is an issue impacting colleges across the state, and we're seeing it here too. When fake students take up space in our courses, it means real students might end up not getting courses. It also raises concerns about financial aid fraud and misuse resources. Faculty are increasingly concerned about the negative impact unchecked fraudulent enrollments have on students and FTEs projections. This resolution encourages professors to monitor student activity, look for unusual enrollment patterns, and report anything suspicious. However, this isn't just a faculty issue, it's an institutional one. By the time a course is invaded by bots, the damage is done. Real students have denied access to courses, and faculty have prepared for sections that may need to be canceled. That's why we're asking for administrative support, including training and tools to help us catch fraud early. Thank you, Noel McMillan, for all your help. She's been wonderful going to our ed tech meetings and Academic Senate meetings to help us identify bots and work us through the process. The second resolution is about something that impacts all of our students every day, the cost of textbooks. We know that expensive materials can be a major barrier to success, and faculty are working hard to make more classes zero textbook cost, or ZTC. This means using open educational resources or other free materials so students don't have to spend hundreds of dollars just to keep up with their coursework. To support this effort, we define key terms, OER, ZTC, LTC, low textbook cost, not free, but low, and even entire zero textbook cost degrees. These definitions will help us track progress and expand these programs across disciplines, including noting in our schedule which courses would be low or no additional cost to students, so students can make informed decisions as they're registering for courses. But we don't do this alone. We can't. Our ZTC Subcommittee is leading the way, but having a faculty ZTC coordinator as an established position on campus would make this work move much more quickly. We're asking that we establish a ZTC coordinator in order to make sure that we can provide the best resources possible for our students. This is, it's an investment. It's an investment in affordability, retention, and student success. So in closing, I want to highlight the thoughtful work of our faculty in these areas. We're keeping abreast of emerging issues, and we're always putting our students first. Thank you.
Thank you, Corbin. Okay, moving on to our Governing Board, Student Trustee Rolls.
Good morning, everybody. It has been a fantastic month, relaying the message from Kayden. Club Rush in Indio was a great success. Students were able to interact with different club leaders and really get a feel for what the campus represents. I think it's important to note that West Shores from the Salt and Sea was actually doing a campus visit in Indio at the same time. And after speaking with a lot of the Tor Laisons, they were really excited that the students who potentially could become College of the Desert students were left with great impressions. There were smiles and a lot of information being shared at what potentially could be successful for them. We also, I also attended the CPC meeting this last month where student equity plan was discussed, and it really just showcased a lot of the hard work that our leaders here on campus do to create a strong future for COD. In Indio as well was the Career Workforce, Careers Fair, held by the Workforce Center. And I felt like it was just a strong connection between all of our campus partners and the students here at College of the Desert. It was just great interactions in the courtyard, and the first time that I had seen the, like, foldable doors on the, from the cafeteria outside onto the patio, and just kind of really great vibe for students to be able to kind of go in and out and just explore the space. This last month, I was also invited to attend the March in March in Sacramento with the Student Senate of California Community Colleges. There, we spoke with legislators and senators on AB 302 and the Sending Alerts to Families in Education, or the SAFE Act, with Senator Sasha Rene Perez, who was inviting throughout and offered so much support in this time where the undocumented community seems to constantly be attacked at and pressured into situations. So, just really powerful to see a lot of students from across the state come together and march through the Capitol. I feel like our presence was definitely recognized. This month, we also attended the American Student Association of Community College Advocacy in Washington DC, along with three other members from ASCOD. Carlos was our awesome advisor who provided us with the tools and training to be able to speak with the congressmen that represent our district. I want to say thank you to Calvert's team, who provided us a very insightful tour of the Capitol. There's history throughout, and to have someone be able to clearly kind of speak on the different statues of the people and what history kind of has unfolded to lead us to now. They got us an awesome view of the Senator, of Speaker of the House's balcony. So to be up there and just see like the magic of Washington DC was awesome. And also want to thank Congressman Raul Ruiz for inviting us to his office as well. We spoke with one of his representatives, Joshua, who was an open ear in our conversation supporting the Trio Program here on campus. That is up for, the cycle for five years just ended, so we are up for refunding from Congress, and I feel like that conversation really showcased the Democrat, Democratic support in education at this time where it seems like there's just always consistent attacks, and the Department of Education is something that is seemingly being dismantled. So, wonderful there. And finally, at the Walter and Mark Center, we are preparing for our final student-led gallery exhibit. There's going to be student performers. Yeah, I left flyers for everyone, and we can send out flyers to any of the faculty staff just to invite everybody, really. There's going to be student performers, we're going to have an art market, and that's happening on April 10th. So photography, painting, sculptures, anything and everything that a student could create is hopefully going to be showcased in the gallery space. This last month, we had a Director of Institutional Grants, Carolyn Maloney. She spoke with students and community members on what attaining grants it looks like and how it could be attainable to make a project or an idea in your mind something that's feasible. We are also ending that artistic professional development. We are also ending that Artistic Professional Development with Curator Sunhee Sun and the Lancaster Museum of History and Art, Andy Camponioni, who will be speaking on how to go about artistic curation and is even offering portfolio reviews for students who have bodies of work. So definitely a lot of ways for anyone who is a creative to be able to see what developing into the next step could look like, and that is all.
Thank you. All right, moving on, Trustee Sanchez Fulton.
It was a busy week, but I wouldn't be reminisce if I don't address our resolution from the library. I recall when I was in high school, I didn't have access to a computer at home, so I would go from high school to a library. And it was because of the library I was able to have that quiet time to do my homework. So libraries are so essential for that sense of quietness and just to get your homework done, and maybe have our surrogate parents, the librarians. I'll never forget that. So for me, the library is a very special place, and we need to really fund our libraries, our public libraries, for everyone. So in celebration of Women's History Month, it was a living testament for the power of women lifting each other up, particularly lifting our College of the Desert students. First, I have the privilege of sharing a luncheon with our COD students. They actually came to Desert Hot Springs, and I was with them. And they were recipients of our Women's Club Student Scholarship Event. Then I joined the Virant Girlfriend Factor Student Scholarship Cabana Event, where the air buzzed of sisterhood and purpose. I don't know if you know this, but the Girlfriend Factor funds our nursing program. A lot of our nursing programs get funding from our women organizations throughout the Coachella Valley. I'm just naming a few, but there's the India Women's Club as well that gives scholarships to all the students. And it was another incredible showing where they empower our students through education and their commitment to the College of the Desert students. So kudos to our Chambers of Commerce as well. It's just basically helping, when I went to school, getting a scholarship from the Women's Club or the Rotary was so important when I was going to school. So these partnerships that we have with the Girlfriend Factor, the India Women's Club, the Rancher Mirage Women's Club, the Desert Hot Springs, they're very vital for our students because they get our scholarships to go to school. And so they're the embodiment, strength, and generosity to our students, and for that, I am profoundly grateful to you. My heart overflows with the gratitude as I reflect the extraordinary COD Talk panel. I participated a couple of days ago for Women's History Month. First and foremost, I want to thank Danny and the Office Dean Maldonado for the student life, for creating this visionary event. It was wonderful to be in a panel of our own faculty and staff. We have to showcase the extraordinary efforts of our faculty, the skill sets, their journeys of their professional and personal lives to where they're at. A lot of students think they're just their professors, but they had adversity and struggles to get their degrees, to be here, to be your professor. So again, I want to thank also Professor, I may be pronouncing your name wrong, Professor Vissoli? I hope I say it right. For giving credit for your students to come and see and be on Zoom to see our panel. I also, they so graciously, our staff of COD shared their personal stories and their time from work just to be part of this panel. The candor and the vulnerability touched me deeply, and hearing your journeys and triumph and challenging was inspiring for me. It was a gift of yourselves. Thank you. And we as academics understand the transformative power of stories. And as professors and teachers and classifieds that we are here in academia, our stories and those every day when you see a student, that means a lot to a student when you're running to a meeting or you're teaching to stop and say, is there anything? It was so wonderful to hear a COD on my panel's staff person say, they would stop, are you okay? So I want to appreciate her for saying that on the panel and your commitment to our students here. I also want to thank our Coachella Valley community. We had a lot of people from outside of the Coachella Valley come in person to our COD talks. So it was wonderful to see the community coming to our campus, and the community that came to our COD campus was their first time. So that shows that they're interested in learning more about COD. So kudos to COD Dan for starting that. That was amazing. I'm still new, old but new, but I, what an incredible idea that was. Our COD community is a beacon of positivity, and this is a testament to where we can achieve COD. It was pretty busy as your liaison. Also, on another note, in our board, I'm your liaison to the bond and foundation, so I'm just going to give just a little snippet and summary and a report on what is going on on our COD Citizens Bond Oversight that I served as your fellow liaison person here. So the Palm Springs campus is moving along to help the community see the progress of the campus. We will be installing construction camera for 24/7 viewing of the campus activity. That's very important so our community can see what's going on. All other projects are moving along, and we're excited to have VP West as part of our team because I know you were also at the meeting. I appreciate the efforts also of our community members that were part of the COD Bond Committee. I also serve as the liaison for the COD Foundation, and I appreciate the efforts of our COD Foundation Board and their continued support to show our COD family and all students that they're for us. So the foundation plays a key role in supporting what we also do. So in that, I just want to mention a couple of things that are coming up. I am really looking forward for tomorrow's, I may be saying this wrong, Baby with the Bathwater. I have not seen that play. It's going to be tomorrow at 3:00 PM, so I'm really excited to go see that. And I encourage the community and all those that are watching to come and see our COD performances, our music, our art. This is what we're about, and it means a lot for the students that perform. Also, want to remind everyone about Friday's tax. President Val Martinez, I just want to let you know I got an email from a community member that thanked us about our free tax that's going on from 1:00 to 7:00 today. They emailed me and thanked them because that is going to help them. They're a senior on a low budget and cannot pay for taxes. So I just want to, I would like to read that email maybe at a further time, but it was wonderful that we're partnering with VITA. And every Friday from 1:00 to 7:00 here in Palm Desert, and on Saturdays, free taxes that they can do from the VITA program alongside. So these beautiful public and private partnerships with the college are very essential. Also, wanted to remind everyone, it was wonderful to attend Senator Ochoa's along with Trustee Myers swearing in ceremony. It was a busy month, and I don't want to take up much time. And I also attended the Greater Coachella Valley Chamber of Commerce, Jeff Gonzalez and Supervisor Manuel Perez's Town Hall. Thank you so much. And that ends my report.
Thank you, Trustee Sanchez Fulton. Trustee Meyer.
Thank you, Chairman, trustees, and fellow Roadrunners. Being a trustee is a continuous journey of learning, much like any profession, and demands ongoing education, both formal and informal, through collaboration with experienced trustees, participation in conferences, and engagement with campus leaders, faculty, and the community. The commitment to growth ensures that our collective knowledge informs and guides and enhances our policies. I recently attended an ACCT webinar on parliamentary procedures. I thought I knew it all. I don't. It provided valuable insights into Robert's Rules of Order 12th Edition, particularly regarding motions, debates, and voting processes. I learned a little bit there. Additionally, I completed the FPP's approved and California State Attorney General endorsed AB 1235 Public Service Ethics Education Course, tailored for public officials in California. These experiences have been instrumental in strengthening my role as a trustee, and I highly recommend them to others in public-facing positions. Also, to deepen my understanding of the college, I observed the Academic Senate and CBC meetings, only in the audience observing, no comments. I toured all five campuses, and I want to thank all the faculty, staff members, and others that I met. What a welcoming experience. Everybody, big smiles. I don't know why, maybe because I was smiling? Maybe that worked. And engaged with community leaders at various events. These efforts have broadened my perspective on the college's operations, future developments, and the community needs of the college. As part of the Ad Hoc Committee, I explored ACCT resources to align board goals with the ACCJC Accreditation Report. As a result of my research for this committee, I will propose establishing a standing committee focused on continuous quality improvement to priorities board development through training, ethics education, strategic alignment, and other initiatives. Community engagement has been equally enriching. I attended events such as the Riverside County State of Education Address, the Women's Leadership Forum, the Riverside County Legislative Press, fostering valuable connections and insight. Volunteered at Taco Tuesday with Lift to Rise, and that highlighted opportunities that they would partner with us to address homelessness and affordable housing for students at COD. I could go on and on about other meetings and things that have occurred, but it's just words, I guess. But I want to leave you with this. Benjamin Disreli's words resonate deeply. "All power is a trust that we are accountable for its exercise, that from the people and for the people all springs." This principle guides my dedication to serving the college and community with integrity and purpose. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Meyer. Trustee Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This past month, I attended the New Market, excuse me, New Market Tax Credit Committee meeting where we welcomed and swore in three new committee members, including two members of the community. I don't want to steal any thunder from our information session later, but I do want to say that we will leverage $3.4 million for the Roadrunner Motors Project, and we are the only community college in the state of California that has been able to successfully implement this funding mechanism for not only our Roadrunner Motors project, but for the India campus as well. And that's a testament to the amazing leadership and staff that we have here at College of the Desert. I also want to mention that I've been attending the Accreditation Ad Hoc Committee the last few weeks. The meetings have been extremely productive as we're making headway to be compliant with the recommendations set forth by the accreditation team. And our colleague Mark will get into more specifics later in our meeting, but special thank you to Acting Superintendent Martinez Garcia, Corbin Wild, Irene and Patricia for helping us with this process. Last but not least, I want to wish everyone a happy Women's Month. I want to highlight four of my heroes who happen to be women. The first is Dolores Huerta, who was a union organizer, leader, and president of the United Farmworkers Union and continues to be a civil rights activist to this day. The next is the President of Mexico, Claudia Scheinbaum, who reinforces what was obvious to us all along, that women can be presidential, successfully lead a country, and do it well. The third is my grandmother, Marta Rocha, who came to this country as an immigrant, got married at 15 years old, had all her daughters by the age of 18, and all three of them have moved on to have successful lives in the professional realm. And the last is my own mother, Gladys Perez, who every single day treats me with love, and I just can't thank my mother enough for what she's done in raising me and being the rock for my family. So thank you, Mom. I love you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Trustee Perez. That's going to be tough to follow, Trustee Oden.
Trustee Oden, can you please turn on your mic?
Done. Thank you. I experienced a loss this morning. Very dear friend, childhood friend. Our parents were best friends. She was one of bridesmaids in my wedding. Her brother was also in my wedding. And my sister is married to her brother. So it's a really difficult time right now, but just wanted to say that I'm really thankful for them. And I want to thank Trustee Perez for his comments, especially on the money situation and being one of the only college to be able to recoup from that, same as we did in India. Thank you for making those comments. On February 22nd, I attended a symposium during Modernism Week and as a guest of the Palm Springs Architectural Committee. On March 6th, I did a radio interview with Mike McCullough and Gene Nichols, giving them an update on what's happening on the COD campus. On the 13th, we did a gender review. On the 14th, I attended a civil rights law webinar, and it's really talking about the implications of the removal of DEI, what it may do for disabled students and so many other programs, but specifically with our disabled students. I was watching a program recently, and basically, they were saying they just want to do away with it. Those of us who are old enough to remember a time when disabled people did not have access to a public education. And I am so concerned that we may be returning to that same situation, which is really concerning. On the 17th, I attended a meeting with the City of Palm Springs Economic Development Tech. On the 18th, I attended a webinar on the federal cuts to education, and I'm really pleased to see higher education really on the forefront of fighting and resisting these changes and the gutting of the Department of Education. On the 18th, I spoke at Community Action Partnership on Mediation. I am a trained mediator. Started a mediation program in the City of Palm Springs along with Dr. Yant. We actually worked together years ago to help implement the mediation for the courts for Riverside County. So that was it. On the 20th, yesterday, I attended the, thank you for Bonnie Steffan for her 20 years of being a trustee. I'd like to say a special thank you to the Academic Senate for their support on the bots and for our students on textbooks. I think that's really important. And while we are making academic... And while we are making accolades and words of appreciation to women, it's kind of glaring the elephant in the room this morning. There are women I'm missing. You know, I don't know, but it's just concerning. Thank you.
I think you have a woman next to you.
Well. Yeah, I know you are a woman. But we're missing a whole side over here. And I'm speaking of our staff, not trustees. But I certainly acknowledge your presence.
Thank you, Trustee Oden. So, first of all, happy birthday in my report. And I am sorry that this morning started off this way for you. I know it's probably difficult for you right now to be with us, but we're glad you are with us, and hopefully that will get you a little bit through the day. And it's like, but welcome and happy birthday. I also, this will come up later in the agenda, but as we're talking about our trustees putting themselves out there and having different experiences. Now, I've got Trustee Meyer that's going to be checking what I'm doing along with Carlos, since he went through that training on Robert's Rules. So, but I think that's evidence of the effort the trustees are making. And under 16.01, there's an information item where that, and I want to thank Trustee Sanchez Fulton for putting herself out there. There's an election for new officers for the California Community Colleges Trustees Board for 2025, and I wanted to just highlight that. And again, this was just a month ago, but Trustee Perez, Trustee Meyer, and our Acting Superintendent President Garcia, they jumped on working with the ad hoc committee on ACCJC recommendations. And I know they'll be sharing more with that. I appreciate getting right in that because that was just a few weeks ago. Irene, you sent us an email. I'm going to highlight a couple of things in there that is upcoming for the trustees. Again, the HACU 30th National Capitol Forum on Higher Education is April 29th through 30th, and I know we'll have a few trustees there. Our California Community College League Conference for 2025, it's an annual trustees conference, will be from May 9th through 11th. So, we'll just highlight that. And I know all the trustees have an email from Irene. And again, thank you for putting that on our radar. In addition, and I'm bringing this up because of some of these dates, on January 17th, the board unanimously approved the timeline for the superintendent president's search. And in accordance with the timeline, the board is to identify one day the week of April 28th for training and finalist interviews, which is the same, kind of overlaps with the HACU conference. And so, I wanted to highlight that because board members will be contacted by the Office of the President's Office. I know AGB will work with the President's Office to determine your best availability that week. And then, we can try to pin down a day. In addition to that, during that time period will be a section on anti-bias and training on the search and selection process, which I think will be very good for us. But another thing I know that Terry likes is that we'll also meet our state requirements as a board in our equity plan. Is that the plan? Terry, okay, okay. So, that'll be good to get that checked off as well. And that concludes my report. Thank you. We're going to move on to the Acting Superintendent President.
Good morning, Roadrunners. Hopefully, everyone's having a great morning. I'd like to echo Trustee Kinnaman's condolences to Trustee Oden, both his loss, but also the celebration of your birthday. All right. I'm excited to report to the board that Palm Springs is moving forward the build. And so, we are now moving towards the programmatic end of the project. As such, we have planned a visit, as you'll see later on in the agenda, to Austin Community College, which is directly tied to the goals of the COD Strategic Master Plan 2024 to 2029, recognizing that our student persistence rates, the rate at which we keep our students, has fallen to 66%. Years ago, the Accelerator Learning Model in the operation at Austin Community College, the Highland Campus, was recognized as the best practice to incorporate all early learning and new curriculum that will help address this issue. Austin's campus is also a former mall site, just like ours. One of the architects of the same facility is on our design team for the project at Palm Springs and has helped us incorporate many of the Austin Accelerator design features into our current project. We've maintained contact with Austin and watched with interest as the Austin Accelerator continued to demonstrate significant improvements to the student persistence at their facility, and we're hoping to do the same at ours. In that vein, Dr. Atkins and I will be joining the WRNS Architect Team at the Society for College University Planning Regional Conference on April 3rd. Starting with the strategic vision for the Palm Springs campus, this session is to create and to show how to incorporate student-centric design principles to expand opportunities for traditional and non-traditional learners, as well as business partnerships that meet the workforce needs. We'll also showcase how supportive environments and student-centric spaces promote inclusivity, collaboration, and discovery. I'm really excited to be going with Dr. Atkins. Of course, he's always the star of the show, so I'm just there to support him. Recently, I want to talk about something that I saw recently in the Desert Sun that shared enrollment rates for College of the Desert students in the UC system. The excerpt reads something to the effect of, the stories read something to the effect of, 50% of our students who transfer to a four university transfer to one of the UC students, which is valuable information about how our students continue their education. But I wanted to share the rest of the story. The UCs are, of course, not only the system that our students transfer to. We have a very good partnership with Cal State San Bernardino, which of all of our students who transfer, 68% of our students transfer to Cal State San Bernardino. We're excited, 68% of our total student transfers transfer to Cal State San Bernardino. We're excited about that number because we are looking to solidify our partnership with Cal State San Bernardino, specifically Cal State San Bernardino Palm Desert. We've been in a lot of talks with them about how to better collaborate, initiating new projects, and solidifying others. We're very excited about that, just because that's where our students go. But we want to make sure that we build a transfer network where students have the opportunity to stay home and stay close to their parents, but also stay close to their work. Lastly, March is Women's History Month. It's a time-honored trailblazer tradition where we celebrate innovators and everyday heroes who have shaped our world in a powerful way. From science to civil rights, education to entrepreneurship, women contribute on very, very many different planes. But sometimes, those achievements have not been viewed as being significant, which is unfortunate. That's why we celebrate months like this, and we hope to never lose the celebrations of months like this. So, let us use this month not only to celebrate women's history, but to elevate voices, shared voices, and commit to a future where equity is more than a goal. It is a reality. Here's to the biological women and those who identify as a woman, and all those who inspire us, challenge us, and lead us to positive outcomes, past, present, and future. COD loves the authentic person you are or you choose to be. We are always in support of you. Together, we are COD. Thank you.
Thank you, President Garcia. Next, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Item 7.01, all consent items will be voted on in one motion. Any board member may request that any items be moved to the action agenda. And are there any requests to separately consider any of the consent agenda items? Okay, seeing none, we will... Do we need to roll call on this? I think we might. Okay, do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda as amended or as presented?
Still moved.
Second.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Can we do a roll call vote?
To you, Trustee Rubles.
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton. Trustee Meyer.
Aye.
Trustee Perez.
Aye.
Trustee Oden.
Aye.
Trustee Kinnaman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to action items. Item 13.01, Board of Trustees, Board Member Travel. This is the one for the Community College League of California, the 2025 Annual Trustee Conference. Do I have a motion to approve 13.01 as presented?
Aye.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. President Garcia.
To you, Trustee Rubles.
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton.
Aye.
Trustee Meyer.
Aye.
Trustee Perez.
Aye.
Trustee Oden.
Aye.
Trustee Kinnaman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Moving on to item 13.02, Board Ad hoc Committee and Association of Community College Trustees Board Services Proposal for COD. The Board's ad hoc committee, composed of trustees Meyer and Perez, have brought this item forward as a recommendation to the board to consider ACCT's proposal to address accreditation-related governance recommendations. Before we go into discussion, do I have a motion to approve 13.02?
Still move.
A second?
Second.
Okay. Trustee Meyer, could you please provide the board with an update on the progress of the ad hoc committee before we vote? Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. The ad hoc committee convened on February 25th, March 4th, March 11th, and March 19th, 2025. This is a summary of the key discussions and decisions made during these meetings. February 25th, the committee reviewed the draft work framework for strengthening board governance collaboratively developed for the committee by Acting Presidents Val Martinez Garcia and Corbin Wild. After discussion and minor amendments, the committee adopted the framework as a guiding document for future actions. This working documents offers both short and long-term perspectives and will be updated as necessary. March 4th, Trustee Meyer presented a project plan derived from the adopted CRIP framework. The plan identified responsibility, assignments, and tentative timelines for addressing deficiencies as highlighted in the ACCJC Accreditation Report. The committee determined two critical actions to be completed before the end of the school year. Conduct a board self-evaluation and share findings in board meetings. Organize a board retreat focused on addressing ACCJC-identified deficiencies. Trustee Meyer volunteered to contact the Association of Community College Trustees, ACCT, and the Community College League of California, CCLC, to inquire about their support services. March 11th, the committee reviewed materials provided by ACCT concerning board retreats, noting that CCLC does not offer such services. After weighing various options, the committee recommended ACCT to facilitate the retreat due to their professional expertise. The committee explored options for conducting a board self-evaluation. A previously college-designed questionnaire created by the, at the time, board chair and vice chair was based on ACCT guidelines. Second was a proposed evaluation framework designed by Corbin Wild. Third was ACC's self-evaluation proposal, which included examples and costs. The committee unanimously recommended using ACC for the evaluation, citing the following reasons. ACCJC recognizes ACCT as reputable external entity, ensuring credibility. The ACCT process is comprehensive, yet user-friendly, ensuring high participation and confidentiality. And building a partnership with ACCT could support future board training initiatives if needed. March 18th, we discussed presenting this report and our recommendations for the March 21st meeting. After Trustee Meyer presents the report, Acting President Val Martinez Garcia will speak, and then, Trustee Perez will add his comments, both as participating members of this committee. If the above committee recommendations are approved, then and as per board policy, the chair and vice chair will work with ACCT to plan and organize retreat. The chair will appoint two board members to work with ACCT to organize the self-evaluation process. It's interesting to note, not interesting, but it's important to note, the chair can do this via memo to the board if he wishes. The committee also states, according to board policy, every fall, the board must appoint two board members to organize the self-evaluation process. In fall of 2024, this was postponed to do an uncertainty surrounding the outcome of the election. Also, the self-evaluation process reports and results must be completed by the end of the school year. The committee also discussed the potential of establishing a permanent committee, named Board Continuous Improvement Committee. This committee would oversee key initiatives such as onboarding new board members, providing ongoing training and education, exploring certification programs, and more. The committee's recommendation for the board retreat, board self-evaluation, are on the agenda in today's meeting. Also attached to the agenda is a proposed contract from ACCT. It's in draft form, and if accepted, we need to review and negotiate with them. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Trustee Meyer. Does anybody else on the...
It'll be all three of us.
Okay, good. I thought I heard him say that. Sure.
Well, first of all, I want to say thank you to the Senate, specifically Dr. Wild and all of her assistance through this process. As you know, our assessment is statewide-recognized as one of the best assessment processes around. And Dr. Wild and Kristi Komacho go around, and they do a lot of trainings and whatnot. So, what better resource to use than the person whoever around the state goes to for assessment? And so, when I approached Dr. Wild, she was more than happy to assist us in developing out a tool. We'll share it at a future meeting once it's all refined. But I wanted the board to know the faculties involved in this process and that we are all in this together, faculty, staff, and the team here, and of course, the board. With that said, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Trustee Perez.
I think my job is easy now. I couldn't have said it better myself. You both did a great job of highlighting what it is that we've been working on. Again, want to thank the committee team that we have, along with Corbin Wild, Irene, and Patricia for helping us in this endeavor. I think we're proving to the community that we're taking this very seriously. We want to make sure that we get there. And I think going with it outside entity will prove that by by showcasing how seriously we're taking it, but also showcasing that we're not grading ourselves, if you will, as it relates to this endeavor. So, just thank you to all.
Okay. Any further discussion from the board?
I think this is, having served on the ACCT board, this is a very, I just want to tell the public, a very unbiased outside viewpoint. And I want to thank Trustee Meyer and Trustee Perez for doing this because I know whoever they recommend and the team internally that is also partaking on that will give us the results we need. Thank you so much for all of you doing this.
Okay. I also, I already, I think, said something earlier, but I did want to extend my gratitude. You started talking about all those dates and all that. You started talking about all those dates and all that commitment of time and energy and research, et cetera. And I echo my sentiments or sentiments of trustee Sanchez Fulton. A C C T is a very well-established organization that's highly respected. And it is really a flagship of where trustees can come together and where they can also provide us resources and support as well. So I'm looking forward to, I see we're going to have something, updates on our agenda almost monthly, and I was glad to see that as well because that will keep us moving forward. And again, I appreciate all your work on this. And with that, Acting President, you mind doing a roll call vote? Okay, you called a question?
Question, okay.
Oh, did you want to? Okay.
Okay. Yes. Trustee Rubles, I'm sorry, student trustee Rubles?
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Aye.
Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Perez?
I, I, but just for the record, Acting Superintendent, do you mind specifying so the community knows exactly what it is that we're voting on?
Yeah, we are voting on the contract.
Okay. Thank you. Aye.
Trustee Odin?
Aye.
Trustee Kinnaman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to item thirteen point oh three. Resolution number zero three two one two five dash two of the Board of Trustees, reaffirmation of support of undocumented students and the privacy of student records. Do I have a motion to approve thirteen point oh three as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This resolution is, and the items that will be presented later are very near and dear to my heart. My family immigrated to this country, some of them undocumented. And I'm eventually later went through the pathway of citizenship process. But I know that's not the easiest process for everybody. This country makes it very difficult for a lot of individuals to go through that process. So I'm glad that we're sticking up for our undocumented students, our dreamers, and for their families, and showcasing that C O D is here for them. We care about them, and this is their home. So I'm really, thank you to our staff for bringing this forward, and I'm happy to support it.
Additional discussion?
I also just want to make some comments and say that it's, I feel that being educated and if undocumented students and people choose education as the pathway to move forward, I am so happy to see that this is getting supported by the college and that we're making that statement to support that community because there's just the note, it's incredibly important for people to be educated and to move forward. And this is the opportunity that can make the community greater and families succeed, so.
Thank you.
Chair. Sure. I'd like to state, those of us in this room, in watching this YouTube, Zoom, or however you're watching this, we all agree with this statement and this declaration. But I am pleased that as a Board, we're bringing it forward in a public forum to say, this is what we know. This is what we believe in, and we're going to stand behind it. And we're not just saying words, we're putting it on public record, and that's important.
Anybody else? Okay. You know, I've had this discussion as well, and we reference in the resolution two thousand and twenty when this Board took a similar action. And I realize this is two thousand and twenty-five, and we have different, we still have some of the students with us from two thousand and twenty, but we have new students. And this is a reaffirmation so our new students know where this Board stands. And so I appreciate you bringing this forward. And is there any other discussion?
I want to say I'm very glad to see it as well, especially considering the time that we're living in right now, that students need to hear from their institution that we are here to support, hands down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Acting President Garcia, can we do a roll call vote?
Yes.
We may have just done one, but.
Student trustee Rubles?
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Aye.
Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Perez?
Aye.
Trustee Odin?
Aye.
Trustee Kinnaman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to action, Human Resources, fourteen point oh one, tentative agreements between the Desert Community College District and the College of the Desert Adjunct Association. Do I have a motion to approve?
Hello.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just have to mention, I was a former adjunct professor here at the college, so I'm really pleased to see this contract. Thank you.
I'd like to thank the negotiation team from the district for all their hard work. Lots and lots of hours went into getting this done, and I'm really happy with the product that they've put forward and on how much collegiality was shown by both parties. Thank you.
Any more discussion? All right. Acting President Garcia, do we do a roll call vote on this?
Student trustee Rubles?
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Aye.
Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Perez?
Aye.
Trustee Odin?
Aye.
Trustee Kinnaman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to item fifteen point oh one, Budget Revisions. Do I have a motion to approve fifteen point oh one as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Acting President Garcia, can we have a roll call vote?
Student trustee Rubles?
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Aye.
Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Perez?
Aye.
Trustee Odin? Trustee Kinnaman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Moving on to item fifteen point oh two, Resolution number zero three two one two five dash one, the Board of Trustees of the Desert Community College District approving a new markets tax credit financing transaction for the construction of the Roadrunner Motors Project and authorizing the execution of necessary documents and taking certain actions with respect thereto. Do I have a motion to approve fifteen point oh two as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, we have Beth Bergman and David Cohn on Zoom if any of the Board members have any questions.
That's.
It's Eileen. Are there any questions?
No questions, but can they, for the public, can they just break it down a little bit?
Summary?
So do we have Beth or David on?
Hi, good morning. I don't know if you can hear me.
Yes. Hi, Beth.
Hi, good morning, all. I think David is.
Perez?
And good morning, Dave Cohen's here.
Hey, David. We have a question from trustee Perez.
Thank you both for calling us. Do you both, or either of you mind kind of explaining it in simple terms as to what exactly, I guess, how important this is that we're receiving?
Sure, I'd be happy to, Beth. I'll go forward. So this is a federal tax credit program that the College of the Desert has used three times before. It is a program that's set up to help attract funding and capital to projects that help low-income people and low-income communities specifically. And we've used it successfully. It's a very difficult and competitive program to be used, which is why there are people like Beth and I who help shepherd this through. We have used it successfully three times before to raise a total of approximately eighteen and a half million dollars for the College of the Desert that specifically was used in conjunction with the Indio Campus projects three times. The original building, the Child Development Center, and then again for the Indio Expansion. We're able to do it again for the Roadrunner Motors Project being built in Cathedral City. We believe that we'll raise a total of about three point four, three and a half million dollars. Again, these are all net numbers. This is after all other transaction costs or expensive expenses are paid, monies that are available to the college. So that's in a nutshell what we're doing, and we're thrilled to be able to do it for, we hope, a fourth time and close within the next few weeks on this to the benefit of the college.
Great, thank you.
I'll just piggyback onto that, that what should be consoling to everybody at this, at this Board of Trustees meeting is that we have a really seasoned team. This isn't our first bite at the apple, and it's even just gotten smoother over time, and the requirements have only decreased because of the confidence in the team that we have and how successful we've been already having done this three times. And it looks like it's just going to be a great asset and a great addition to the programs that the college already offers. So we're excited to be, we're already deeply in the throes. And as you know, you already met a month ago and approved getting into this. And this is just a follow-up resolution because we were preparing the drafts and they weren't ready yet for the first meeting. So for any of you who has trouble sleeping at night, you can pull up one of these documents to help put you to sleep. I'm kidding. But we're happy to answer any questions, and we're thrilled. Everything's going smoothly and as planned. And so we have, we have no concerns from where we're sitting.
Thank you.
You sound like an ignorant question. Back in the day, we'll be having a copy. Is it in, I'm trying to maybe find it. Maybe I'm ignorant and I'm not seeing it, but a summary for the public, this is all, these are new tax, I'm aware of what's going on, but the public. Just, they can go to our webs, maybe I'm ignorant, but just making sure that.
We can provide you with the summary.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'm so excited about it. I got choked up. The, this has been something that I know that David has worked with us from the early days, and it's good to see us continuing to be successful. So thank you. Any additional discussion?
I do have a question, actually. So just out of curiosity. So you're working with investor groups and different partners. Is there like a number or amount of people you were able to kind of gather together to make this happen?
Thank you. Good question. And each transaction that we do and each project is a bit different. This time, we're working with two different new market tax credit, what we call C D Es, which stands for Community Development Entity. Those are the groups that are awarded a portion of the tax credit capacity that the New Markets Program has given, gives out every year to then select projects like this one. So right now, for this project for Roadrunner Motors, we're working with two groups. And then, of course, each of those groups has their own teams of legal counsel, and there are financial modeling accountants, and it's quite a large group of participants that puts together a new market tax credit transaction. But I think to answer your question the way you're asking, we have two groups this time. In the last transaction, the one we did for the Indio Expansion Project, we had seven groups. And that was probably, if not the largest, maybe been the second-largest new market tax credit transaction done in all of twenty twenty-four. It was quite an astounding transaction done on the college's behalf, which attests to the benefits, the deep mission impacts that people believe College of the Desert is able to deliver to their student body, but also to the community at large. As a matter of fact, that project has been nominated for, in the small industry, the Deal of the Year, basically. And we hope to learn by the end of the year whether it will be awarded the Deal of the Year, but to be nominated is quite an honor. So while that's not something that I think anybody here is going to be tracking closely, just know that we started doing this work well over a decade ago when trustee Kinnaman was the president of the college, and we're continuing to do it. It's been very, very successful. And if we close this transaction with the Roadrunner Motors, we expect we'll be over the twenty million dollar mark of raising funds for the college, and that's quite an extraordinary feat.
That's awesome. David, you could have led with, we've been nominated.
It is award season, I know, for everybody in Hollywood, but just wanted to let you know. The leading here was an additional almost three and a half million dollars for the college. So that I'm thrilled to be able to say.
And I think trustee Meyer has a question or comment.
Is there a restriction on these funds?
We'd have to get into an entire hour-long conversation about how New Markets works, but what I will say to you is that when the monies eventually come to the college, they will replace other funds that are being used, which are bond monies. And therefore, the college will have additional monies at its capacity to spend as it may need to because that three and a half million dollars will replace other monies. So that's, it's a difficult way of answering your question, not quite direct, but the college should have the capacity of additional, roughly three and a half million dollars, to spend it somewhat unrestricted.
Oh, that was very clear to me.
Okay, I'm glad it was. There's nothing clear in the tax world about these things, so we have to be careful how we answer things.
If I can just add, coming into the college here and seeing the work that's been done on this, it really is quite remarkable and quite unique. So it's something really you should be very proud of. I've not seen this done before. Both David and Beth have been very kind in educating me about all the complexities of new market tax credits over the last month. I have more emails in my inbox regarding this particular project than anything else for the rest of the college. And they have both done remarkable work, really working around the clock. They've had multiple meetings every single week. They really are following through, and they've been an incredible asset to us. So I just wanted to highlight that. Thank you.
Our pleasure.
I believe trustee Perez and I and Joel were on that with these new tax credit. I would love a future agenda item to talk about the intricacy, maybe not just a summary, but maybe a future, and go in a report how wonderful and the benefits that we will be getting for the College of the Desert. Thank you so much for allowing me to say that.
And if I might, Chairman Kinnaman, just add that we're doing something slightly different in this transaction that I believe the Board knows of. We've let you know that a portion of the funding, we hope, will fund directly to the foundation as well, possibly as much as two hundred and twenty thousand dollars of the funding. There's an application in now to have that money go to the foundation directly. And then the foundation would be able to use it for its purposes to further the missions and work with the students and for textbooks, for food insecurity. A lot of the monies have been used for those purposes in the Indio Campus and other places. And for instance, Jessica Enders has been quite helpful, making sure that some of the monies to do things like the Find Food Bank and other things, the textbook program, transportation programs, all those pieces were put together. So we're thrilled to be able to help provide these monies that have much farther range and impact than otherwise the college would be able to have.
Any other discussion? All right, uh, Acting President Garcia, roll call vote.
Trustee Robles, Student Trustee Robles?
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Aye.
Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Perez?
Aye.
Trustee Odin?
Aye.
Trustee Kineman?
Aye.
Question card.
Thank you. Item fifteen point oh three. And if I get choked up again, I, I'll look over here at my vice chair. Just be ready, okay? Uh, notice of intent to award two contracts. Bid number four, three dash nine, eight, W dash zero, five hundred dash PSDP dash building dash rebid. BP seventeen, General Contracting Services for the Palm Springs Development Project. Increment two and three. Do I have a motion to approve fifteen point oh three as presented?
So moved.
Thank you. Any discussion? Yes, I just had, these were the two bids that were delayed earlier, correct?
Correct. And I'm gonna have Robert come up, uh, and if he can answer any of your questions also.
Here we go. Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, yeah, so short version is um, this bid package was just way too big. The project is so big. No single paint company could handle it themselves. So we split it apart. Um, did it as two portions. Now we've got great numbers back. We're right on target with our budget. And this is the last of our bidding for Palm Springs. We are full speed ahead.
Any other questions, discussion? All right. Acting Vice, Acting President Garcia.
Student Trustee Robles?
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton? Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Perez?
Aye.
Trustee Odin?
Aye.
Trustee Kineman?
Aye.
Question card.
Okay, moving on to information items, sixteen point oh. See, uh, California Community College Trustees, uh, CCT two thousand twenty-five Board Election. Uh, this is, uh, is the election I mentioned earlier where members of the CCT Board of the League will take place until April twenty-fifth. This process and the election packet with candidate details has been included in today's agenda for your review. If you would like to submit an e-ballot vote, please contact Irene Morales. The results will be announced at the CCLC Annual Trustee Conference in May. And the other informations are, items are uh, sixteen oh three, Administrative Procedure twenty-three sixty on minutes. Administrative Procedure thirty-four fifteen. Immigration Enforcement Activities. And sixteen point oh five, Administrative Procedure fifty-seven, fifty-seventeen, responding to inquiries of immigration status, citizen status and national origin information. And, uh, President Garcia, if there's any of these that you would like to, uh, delve into the two, please feel free to, or if there's any of my colleagues that have questions or comments about any of them, uh, please, uh, I'll rely on you to answer them.
Right. First of all, I'd like to thank, uh, faculty member Jose Simo for bringing forward, uh, examples of these two APs that are before you today. Um, as you know, uh, Professor Simo oversees the Dream Center and he is extremely, um, positive and influential in the lives of our undocumented students and the students that attend that center. Also, I'd like to thank all, all the Student Services staff who worked on this specifically. I'm looking to my right. Uh, Carlos Maldonado, Dean Carlos Maldonado. And I would ask him if he wants to have, uh, to say anything about these two items in particular.
Uh, I, I think just that the, the college is committed and I think putting it in an administrative procedure that had, um, an opportunity to make people feel comfortable, I think, uh, was the the campus was happy to do the work and to, uh, make sure we moved it forward. Uh, it really just outlined our process. Uh, it's not anything new. I think that's what we've been highlighting across campus is that we've had rules about protecting information and ensuring that our students feel safe and um, many people came together very quickly to make this happen.
Right. I'd like to highlight also the CPC pushed these items through so they can make her agenda today. Uh, so they did a first and second read together and they felt it was that important to make sure it was read today. So before you is also their work. So just want to thank everyone involved.
Uh, for the public, the CPC is our College Planning Council. And how many people sit on that council?
Eighteen.
Yeah, there's a lot.
It's, it's about twenty-eight, I think.
That was way low then.
Okay, well, our, our appreciation for their efforts to push this through. Yeah. Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I have a question about, um, the voting for the four candidates. As a board, we have to put those four forward, not individually as board members.
But Irene, do you recall, I, I know that, uh, in the past, I, I believe it we submitted to you, but it wasn't a formal action item or is my memory incorrect?
The way I understood it was that if there's someone on the list that you'd like to nominate, you can let me know the name and then I can submit the e-ballot.
But do we have our own individual vote or are we all nominating for collective?
Yes, so I will need, um, it's one submission for the district.
Okay.
So how are we gonna go about picking the other three? I think there's one that we're, we'll pick, but.
Yes, I, and I'm, and our timeline too, we, I don't, we won't have another meeting, will we?
No.
Yes, so after I receive the names, I will tally them up and then I will submit the e-ballot.
So if there's no objection to the board, we can submit individually and you'll just tally them and, uh, submit the four highest.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So we don't have to nominate someone here from the DAS?
That's my understanding.
Yeah, correct. So, um, if you'd like to take time to read the materials and review the packet of the candidates, you can do so. And then I can follow up after the meeting and let you know the timeline of when I will need those, uh, names so that we can submit in time before the election ends.
I will say this is one item in the past over the years where I've always struggled because uh, you've got this long list. And I think our default has been to do it the way that Irene's, uh, proposing, which is kind of counterintuitive to the way we vote on items as a board. And I believe that's how the other districts do it as well. And perhaps us getting verification on that would be a, a good thing as well.
Yes, and Board Chair Kineman, I also looked at previous board meetings from previous years of how that was done. And so that's why I agendized it this way. And, um, I, I also recall the tally of the votes.
Okay. So, uh, if we follow this process and then we can ask, uh, just clarification from, from council that we're okay uh, before submitting, uh, would the board be comfortable with that?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. And thanks for the questions. Always a learning moment. Um, let's see here.
Chairman Kineman?
Yes.
What, I could just speak several years ago. It would be just for the sake, it would be wonderful. We could, to have legal counsel, so legal counsel, can we bring in legal counsel on this? Or, and then bring it back to discuss that today because maybe it might state that the board um, in a public manner has to, I, I, so I would love someone from the CCT just to confirm, double confirm, because our board meeting meets next April.
April tenth.
Hmm.
April tenth is the board meeting.
And, uh, Carlos, since this hasn't, I mean, it's not on the agenda for doing something like, uh, approving anything today. So that kind of puts us on.
That's correct. You, um, it's not agendized as an action item, so you would have to bring it back at another a meeting. You can have a conversation, but you cannot come to a, a consensus.
And then just to add, Board Chair Kineman, the, um, the deadline to submit the e-ballot is April twenty-fifth. And the next meeting is April tenth.
Okay, we still have time. Okay. Okay, well, let's, let's get clarification. Uh, and if, if it says it's okay to do our past practice, uh, I'm comfortable with doing past practice if it comes back to maybe we weren't doing it correctly, uh, then let's do it correctly. So.
We'll definitely look into it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Trustee Meyer, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Okay, there we are. Item seventeen, Information Human Resources, seventeen point oh one, CSEA MOU Outreach Specialists for Foster Youth Services Position FTE Increase. You want to speak to that?
Yeah, we are looking to increase, uh, our foster outreach specialist to, uh, increase the FTE on that. I don't know, um, if, uh, trustee, trustee, I'm sorry. I just promoted you. Uh, if, uh, staff could come up, uh, to talk about this? Yeah.
Terry, I'm not sure it's a promotion.
So, so, uh, yeah, so CSEA and the district came to an agreement to, um, increase the outreach specialists for foster youth. They had some additional funding. It was initially, initially at point seven four and now it's at one, um, FTE, which will help provide more services to our students.
Wonderful.
Thank you, Terry.
Okay, our next item is, uh, eighteen point oh one, Investment Report, Second Quarter, October one, two thousand twenty-four to December two thousand twenty-four. Do we need any discussion on that item?
Uh, do you have anything?
It's pretty. Seeing no, uh, questions, moving on to, uh, yes, we have nineteen point oh one. This is the Academic Senate Resolution that I think Corbin, uh, mentioned earlier to us. And then we move to our study sessions. Item twenty point oh one, Future Ready Adult Education Strategic Plan. So Acting President Garcia, can you please help introduce the study session?
Yeah, I'm excited to present to you today, uh, what I think is a really great endeavor that we've been participating in for about us, almost a year actually, when this first came to our attention. As we try to look at how our not-for-credit and non-credit and our credit programs all align. Um, we solicited the, um, the work from, um, Jobs for the Futures. And I'm proud today to introduce you to work, to hard-working, uh, COD employees. Veronica Izriada and Dr. Scott Atkins, who will tell you more about this great program or what we've been doing.
We do have a PowerPoint and Devin, I believe it's online.
Yes, we have Devin Minor from JFF on Zoom.
Well, good morning. Board of Trustees, President Martinez Garcia and Executive Cabinet. Thank you so much for this opportunity to share with you about the COD Future Ready Adult Education Strategic Plan. Next slide.
Uh, I have the clicker here for you.
The college contracted with Jobs for the Future, JFF, to work with us in creating a Future Ready Adult Education Strategic Plan. JFF is a national nonprofit that drives transformation of U.S. education and workforce systems to achieve equitable economic advancement for all. They do this by designing solutions, scaling best practices, influencing policy and action, and investing in innovation. They forge deep partnerships with employers, investors, entrepreneurs, policymakers, and education and workforce development providers to break down barriers and reimagine what's possible. The objective of this project was to develop an actionable, data-informed, Future Ready Adult Education Strategic Plan with the goal to strengthen our not-for-credit, non-credit, and credit programming, creating a bridge and educational pipelines between the three, enhancing program alignment across all educational offerings. The Future Ready Adult Education Strategic Plan provides a blueprint for an inclusive, integrated educational infrastructure that better align COD's not-for-credit, non-credit, and credit programs, supporting complementary student entrances and exits across all educational pathways. The content throughout this plan is intended to guide, support, and inspire the ongoing commitment of the COD community to reframe not-for-credit and non-credit programs as viable and economic ed-educational options that competitively prepare our learners for quality jobs in in-demand industries. This project was completed from February to December of two thousand twenty-four. JFF worked closely with the COD team to identify critical enabling conditions, best practices, and areas of opportunities to better align our not-for-credit, non-credit, and credit programs, again, supporting complementary student entrances and exits across these pathways. The work was successfully accomplished through these primary approaches and actions. A qualitative and quantitative analysis, a ten-member task force of COD faculty and staff, and a learning series. First, JFF conducted faculty, staff, and student interviews and took an in-depth analysis of our administrative COD data. Our Future Ready Task Force was made up of key team leaders, leaders representing different areas of the college to include the directors of our Educational Ed Centers, the CTE Program, Workforce Solutions Center, Institutional Research, our deans from the Applied Science and Business and Health Sciences, the Academic Senate President, and our Vice Presidents of both Instruction and Student Services. The task force met monthly and played a critical role in co-designing and informing the insights, recommendations, and action plan included in this Future Ready Plan. Finally, JFF provided a six-part Future of Work Learning Series. The learning series featured our own COD faculty along with national subject matter experts, all with expertise in education and workforce development. This series were designed to better prepare our college's faculty and staff for the evolving landscape of learning and work, covering these topics: holistic student support, structuring language and communication, creating quick paths for learners, partnerships and student connections to workforce, the evolving, evolvation of non-credit in California, and the shifts in the American economy. So now I'd like to introduce you to Devin Minor, the Project Director for Jobs for the Future. And I would like to thank Devin for his strong leadership on this project. He will share with you some of the findings and recommendations of the Future Ready Adult Education Strategic Plan.
Hello, everyone. Good morning. Um, thank you Veronica for that introduction. Um, as Veronica stated, my name is Devin Minor. I am a director with Jobs for the Future. Um, and I just want to say thank you to the Board of Trustees, first off, for approving the partnership. Um, we had such a great time collaborating with, um, Acting President Val Martinez, um, Veronica, Dr. Scott Atkins, uh, Corbin, and, and, and many more. Um, and so as Veronica stated, we, um, engaged in these qualitative and quantitative analyses. Um, on the screen here, um, you'll see, um, um, some of the themes that rose to the top. We have a lot that kind of, um, was unearthed, but these were like the ones that we really wanted to, um, shine a brighter light on. And so as you see here, um, you know, we saw and learned and was reaffirmed, uh, the dedicated educators, faculty and staff, um, responsive student services of programs, um, making sure that students have the support they needed to succeed and thrive. Um, bodies- to succeed and thrive, bodies of financial support, and then also just a commitment to innovation and new approaches, which we saw shine brightly throughout this project. With the themes and assets also came a problem that we wanted to solve, our gap that we wanted to solve. And Veronica hinted at that, at the beginning of her statement. And so you'll see here on the, on the screen that, you know, the biggest opportunity that we saw and that we want to focus on was that, you know, COD currently has no existing or complementary infrastructure among its not-for-credit, non-credit, and credit programs. Next slide, please. And so when you double-click on that problem or these opportunities, these were the specific gaps and opportunities that we unearthed. I'll let you all kind of quickly glance at these, but some of the things that really stood out was, one, just, you know, student services not being as accessible for some of the not-for-credit and non-credit participants. The location and just the language that we use to describe our learners in the not-for-credit, non-credit was, you know, something that can be improved. And then looking at the bottom of the screen, also just looking at how we can refine our data infrastructure to better capture data that will allow us to track and monitor some of these students, the not-for-credit and not, and not-credit side. Next slide, please. So we were able to work with the team at College of the Desert to design this theory of change, where what did we looked at? What are the current assets that we, that you all have at College of the Desert? And that's really, you know, the information that we see in the inputs. Looking at the outputs, like what are the things that we want to begin to see and that we're striving towards? And how can that be a guide towards some of the key outcomes, long-term goals, and just the broader impact that we want to see at College of the Desert? In addition to the theory of change, we also offered six recommendations for this pipeline to be strengthened. Each recommendation includes tactical steps that the institution can take, along with a promising example from the field that can be used for inspiration. So I briefly go through these six recommendations, and hopefully you all had a chance to skim the larger report. If not, I'm sure your team will share that with you all for a deeper analysis. But the first recommendation here was, one, investing and creating institutional capacity to support students across the pipeline of not-for-credit, non-credit, and credit programs. Next slide, please. Second recommendation was to really build on the work that the institution is doing with guided pathways and create field and programmatic pathways with clearly articulated and visual on-ramps and off-ramps between the not-for-credit, non-credit, and credit programs. Next slide, please. The third recommendation was to develop a marketing and communications campaign to build and heighten institutional awareness of the different on-ramps and off-ramps. One of the things we learned is that you all have a lot of assets and things that are available on campus. It's just a lot of people don't know about them, so how do we kind of build that awareness on campus? Next slide, please. The fourth one, as I kind of hinted to earlier, is really making sure that all support services are available and accessible for all learners across the not-for-credit, non-credit, and credit pipeline. The fifth recommendation was to build a robust and comprehensive data collection process and infrastructure, inclusive of all learners. And then sixth one that you'll see here is to build a complementary work-based learning and cooperative work experience programs on campus to strengthen that connection and make things a little bit more complementary. And so that I know was a quick kind of breeze through the recommendations. Again, we kind of expound upon all these in the larger report, but I want to pass it over to Scott, who will talk about next steps that's being considered.
As you see, we have a 90-day sprint. We're at the end of that 90-day sprint. A little bit of hesitation there, coming back in from January, but we're doing a great job. And so we made three priority areas that I want to talk about. And we have identified these three. And for a priority area one, we have identified current and future programs where PACE and CTE align, and we'll be working with faculty and subject matter experts to further connect the pathways from credit, non-credit, and not-for-credit offerings. There's been a lot of good work already done before we came into this. Priority two is to work, has already begun in this area, particularly in providing more structure and outreach for our internships and apprenticeships through COD's Career and Workforce Solutions and the regional employer engagement offices. And for priority three, we are in the process of building upon the work that has already been accomplished on pathways and roadmaps, and will be in collaboration with faculty, counselors, student services, and our PACE program to move that forward. To accomplish these goals and several others that are listed in the study, we have begun to develop a structure that will also ensure that the JFF strategic plan is continued and institutionalized on our campus. The JFF work group will continue to be based and supported by the President's Office and Office of Instruction. The JFF work group will conduct monthly meetings, keep the original members, but shift the leadership to two of us, our directors, as moving forward to keep it moving quickly. However, the work group will expand to other members, especially adding more faculty and students to get their feedback. And then we will establish subcommittees from the, from that group that will address specific recommendations and then report back. And we'll use a working document to track progress and to ensure accountability in this committee. Do you have any questions?
Opening up the board, any questions or comments or thoughts?
Question. I just went on their website of GFF.org. I'm just curious why the college is not hiring. I'm really big about hiring within at the College of the Desert. Are they assisting us and are we hiring faculty and staff within the college? Or are they just a consultant? What I'm not understanding. Thank you.
Job, Jobs for the Future is a consultant company. They helped us go through the strategic plan after this. We'll be on our own unless we need a lifeline.
Thank you for that question.
One part of our effort to try to streamline that, that pathway. Many of our students who enter PACE do so, but they kind of get lost after that. And so what we're trying to do is create a space for where students can go from not-for-credit to the credit, non-credit side, but also looking at our non-credit opportunities where students are taking classes for non-credit. How do we move them into the transfer or into the credit pathway? And so this effort helps streamline that as well. So there's, there's multiple levels here that are going to have multiple input from different areas, senate, different bargaining units as well, as we look to probably fill new positions or whatnot in the future. But definitely we really appreciate about JFF's help. And of course, these two have been amazing, so we really appreciate you.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I do have a question on. So for the recommendation number one, it talks about career coaches. That's something that the college currently doesn't have? I know counseling and a lot of people are open ears and can kind of guide you towards what you're chasing, but do we have like a specific person who does that?
Sir, our goal is, right now, our PACE learners don't always get connected to college resources. So our goal is to have our PACE learners get connected and, again, continue their education with what we have to offer through non-credit and credit. So really helping that bridge and that pipeline to the non-credit and credit side of the house.
And I would just jump in and say that coaches and counselors may be used interchangeably here. And so just building on what Veronica said is having some dedicated capacity who can really focus on supporting those not-for-credit students to navigate the options that are available on the non-credit and credit side.
So I just, I have one question. I'm going to look at my colleagues and make sure. I'm going to give them the first options here, sorry. Okay. I just wanted to jump in and say, I know sometimes in these programs, like if they're at PACE, maybe you can get a certificate or something like that. And that at some institutions, it's developed where those programs sometimes become an associate's degree. And that the PACE program may be a balloon trial on a program or whatever you want to call it, a pilot program, and it evolves, especially in emerging fields and that kind of stuff. Do you see this plan working something like that as well or supporting something like that?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for that question. You're going to lead right to our next presentation. So one of the goals beyond being an entry-level skill-building program that then sends our learners into additional educational pathways. We could also be an incubator or a pilot for programs that are going into the credit side of the house. But there are needs for this training for the workforce, and you'll hear about that in a moment with the paramedic program. So we can act as an incubator while a program is getting its certification or curriculum approved that we know takes some time, but there is need immediately in the industry to fill those skills gaps. So yes, we're absolutely working toward that in the not-for-credit side.
Just to add, this becomes really important when we're talking about the development of Palm Springs and some of the programming there. It's a little bit different or innovative. And so using PACE as our incubator space and then going through the curriculum process with faculty and then bringing that on to what I call the college side or the credit side, non-credit side, is really important. Again, you're about to see an example of that with a paramedic program. But there are other examples on campus. We've done that in the past. So we're not to, you know, steal their thunder back there, but the paramedic program is our newest and largest of these efforts.
Okay, well, I find that exciting. And I'm biased. That's why I believe the community college system is the best educational system because we can move quicker, faster, and are much more innovative, in my biased opinion. And so I appreciate your presentation. Do we want to move on to the paramedic program?
Good segue.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And if with that, if you don't mind, I'll go ahead and call up Lori Green, Adjunct Professor, Paramedic Program, and Walt Meyer, the Public Safety Academy Director. And I'll let you, let the board know, this is a request that came from the board. And we decided to pair the two presentations because there's so much aligned in what we're trying to achieve. One has the overall arching, creating the pathway, but also giving example of a program that we're hoping that makes its way back across and into credit and non-credit. Walt?
Good morning. I'd like to thank the Board of Trustees and President Garcia for the opportunity to provide an update on our brand-new paramedic program. Think we're what? Yeah. Three weeks old. So I am Walt Meyer. I serve as the Director of our Public Safety Academy. With me is Lori Green, the Director of our Paramedic Program. The creation of this program has been a long journey. It was first proposed as a concept in 2012. The first curriculum was developed and approved in 2019, but the onset of the pandemic delayed further development. In 2023, we received authorization to restart the development process. We started with the completion of a training needs assessment. This assessment included recommendations for the development of a paramedic program from our fire advisory committee, our emergency medical services advisory committee, and our law enforcement advisory committee. We also received community feedback asking for a paramedic program via the COD Foundation. Our assessment revealed that 90% of calls for service to fire departments were for medical assistance. Each day, fire departments and ambulance providers in Riverside County are short about 260 paramedics, and it's anticipated that our region will need almost 1,300 new paramedics over the next five years. Our program aims to help with that community need. The paramedic program also fills a void in our college programming by providing the graduates of our EMT and FIRE academies with a continuing education option that increases their skills and their earning potential. Before Lori begins her portion of the presentation, I would like to say thank you to the Moreno Valley College, the COD Foundation, Professor Shante Wilson, Professor Cameron Miller, Director Prudence Chase, Director Sarah Frye, Director Veronica Israida, and Wendy Deris. We would not have a paramedic program without their efforts and support. I mean, it really was a team effort from, from the very beginning. So now I'd like to introduce you to the person who built our paramedic program and now serves as the Paramedic Program Director, Lori Green.
Hello, good morning, Board. So I want to just double back on one thing that Walt said. When he talks about a shortage, that 260 is 260 paramedics a day. That's what we're short in the county. So that's where this need is, it's essential that we establish a paramedic program and help to support not only our community, but also our community partners. So now I've got the good information for you, a little bit about the program. So the paramedic program is 1,344 total hours. We had it originally written at $1,800 because what we're trying to do is mimic the program at MVC. So the overall goal is the community colleges that are offering paramedic programs, MSJC, MVC, and ourselves, all have the same curriculum. So it doesn't matter where a student goes, they're going to get that same curriculum and that same, I want to say overarching experience, right? Faculty are a little bit different on how they teach it, but that overall arching experience should be, there should be commonality there, right? So it was very essential. PACE is our hero in this. They were very instrumental in taking a need that we saw within our community and establishing this program so that we didn't have to wait till 2026 to offer the program to students. So we could offer it now because we had to restructure our curriculum due to Title IV changes within CTE. And so we could turn on a dime, which was really effective, and we got such a tremendous support from our community partners because we were able to do that. So, and our community partners are the ones that you see up here for clinical experience hours, field internship hours. There are 12 classes in the program. It's 39.5 units. I know we had discussions on, could this evolve into an associate's degree? Absolutely. We are working on those, on those avenues for this to be an associate's degree on campus. But we want to get those students that want to be paramedics and see that career path, which is exactly what PACE was talking to you about, is that we want to get them started, right? Most of the students, their exposure to our campus has been in the EMT program, and so we want to foster that pathway. So the next step is either to the FIRE Academy or to the paramedic program. So that's what we're doing here. The class meets three times a week. Walt gave you a little bit about the history. As we go through this presentation, I'll speak a little bit more about the history. As I said, we're trying to partner with our other community colleges. There's, there's a really good tactic to this because we all kind of converge on the same hospitals. We converge on the same community partners like Cal FIRE, Palm Springs, Cathedral City. And we don't, we want to make sure that our students are getting the exposure that is required by guidelines. And so it's almost like air traffic control. By doing this, we collaborate with all of the other program directors, and we smoothly transition the students through all those milestones in the program. So I look at this, and it was a bunch of paperwork. Yes, it was. So we had to design curriculum. We had to get approval through not only our local EMS agency, but also through the accrediting body. Now I say approval because we're still going through the accreditation process. It's much like the nursing program. So we won't be done with our accreditation process for another two years, but we were able to get approval through both of our governing bodies in eight months to start this program. So we also have several funding opportunities that were presented to us. So we got original reallocation funds so that we could start purchasing equipment when we initially started the program. We partnered with the nursing program to get HRTP funds on reallocation. And we also partnered with the foundation who helped to raise over $150,000 for the paramedic program.
Okay, can you repeat that one more time so the public can hear how wonderful our foundation was?
Yes, your foundation was completely wonderful because all of those funds went to the paramedic program. So that was at least $150,000 to the paramedic program. And so far, that has paid for books and uniforms. And this was a discussion, it all kind of ties into today's conversations about zero to no cost for the students, and that was a big push that we had in starting this program, that it wasn't an out-of-pocket cost to the students. So the students are very grateful for that. So these are the classes that they're going to experience. So these are the classes that they're going to experience in the program. They have completed the paramedic preparation course where we assess their readiness to come into the program. So currently, we have 20 students who have started the program. Just to, you know, look at what does, what do the students do? How do they, this is their meeting schedule. So they meet three times a week, basically nine to six. And a very cool thing, this is part of our cool community partners, we have two doctors teaching in the program. And one of them actually tied us in with the Annenberg Health Sciences Center so that our students can experience their simulation labs so that they can experience what it's like in the hospital setting before they go into the clinical setting. So they're shadowing residents, they're using that simulation lab, and we're very excited to have that partnership. So these are some of our clinical sites. Desert Regional, Eisenhower, JFK. We have a couple of behavioral health sites. Those are all our field community partners. So once the students go through the clinical setting, they then graduate into the field externship where they're riding on ambulances or fire engines with a preceptor. And so these are our community partners that you see up here. We always have needs, I put down at the bottom, program needs. We're always looking for pediatric centers because that's the, those are the spots that are the most hardest to fill with paramedic students in the hospital. We're competing with other programs. So the pediatric sites are definitely something we're always looking for. And then, of course, our thank you. So we talked about MVC. So Moreno Valley College was instrumental as well in helping us to establish our curriculum and the layout of the courses. PACE, the COD Nursing Program, the foundation, Riverside County Fire, AMR, Palm Springs, Cathedral City Fire, Palm Springs, Eisenhower, Desert Regional, JFK, and our medical director, Dr. Foster. So, do you have any questions?
Can I ask Director Meyer, can you explain why the partnership with Moreno Valley is so important to the county of Riverside?
With who again?
Moreno Valley and the county of Riverside.
You know, sometimes when you get into these programs, there's, it's like there's a competition between the colleges. And Dean Lingle and I went up to meet with Dean Rawlings at Moreno Valley College just for the purpose of, how do we do this? How do you do this? I mean, it's this incredibly huge program. And when we sat down and met with Dean Rawlings, it became very apparent that he had the same vision that we did, that paramedics on the west end of the county who are trained at Moreno Valley College should be trained exactly the same as paramedics in the east end of the county here in the Coachella Valley and out to Blythe. And that standardization of training is incredibly important. The other thing is, is it makes it easier for our students to move in, back and forth between programs if they have to. Say they move away halfway through and they move up to the west end of the county. We don't want that student to just have to stop the program. We want that student to be able to continue on and move on. So a lot of what we did was student centric in its design and how we're putting it together. And Moreno Valley, they've been super helpful. I mean, they just gave us all their curriculum, said, here you go. They gave us everything we asked for, and they've just been an outstanding partner. And we're already now helping Mount San Jacinto do the exact same thing. So all three colleges will be exactly the same. Well, not exactly, but pretty much, yeah.
And I'd like to highlight that as a note for the board to see that COD is not concerned with the boundaries or competition. We're addressing a county need. You heard the number earlier of the 260 a day. And so we know that there is a need for our community to have paramedics in the communities that we serve, but also that the county serves. So we want to ensure that there's that continuity across the county. It's really important to us. And you see that also in our Public Safety Academy, our fire academy. So this is an extension of that. So I'm really proud of the work that you all have done in that area to partner across the county.
And I just wanted to add two things that I might have missed before, or at least one thing, is that the program is fully funded. So the students, it's no cost to the students to attend for this cohort. And then the second thing, and I was just recalling it, the second thing is when accreditation came out, going back to the MVC, MSJC collaboration, they commended us highly on doing that type of collaboration and that that's not something that has been done before and that we should be the mentor to other programs and processes that are looking to onboard.
Is that okay? I just, the program, I remember back in 2012 when you did bring it up and everything would say, well, it takes a couple of years to develop curriculum. So the student centric part of the program is so critical because a lot of times when you're in a program, they don't offer the next course. And I, it really, when you mentioned that you can go to another community college because they're offering it, so they're, they don't have to wait another semester before they have to graduate. I really appreciate that. Also, what I think our need, I want to go back to, you said, could you say that again to the public that we're looking to help, you know, like our needs are to meet with, you said pediatric centers? What do you mean?
Yeah, so one of the harder places for the students to get into in the hospital is in the pediatric and OB rotations. It's very competitive. There's just not, you know, on a routine basis, there's not enough spots. So we look for, you know, pediatric clinics. Our paramedic students are allowed to go to those well-baby facilities. They're allowed to go there. So we're always looking for those other opportunities to contract with community partners to be able to send our paramedic students there.
And the most, the best word I hear is free for the students. And, but I, what is the monetary, like a typical program, how much would it cost at another community college? The public knows, just...
Sure. So on a range, it's about $10,000 to $14,000 to attend a paramedic program.
Thank you.
And how many students are you currently running through the program?
So right now, we have 20, and we are able to take 30.
Thank you.
We were, we were able to get those 20 signed up in about, what, four weeks? We got a go date and it was like four weeks away and we literally had 20 students in ready to go in four weeks. So the need is there. And, you know, the goal will be for all the three colleges to say, hey, we started ours yesterday, but College of the Desert or Mount San Jacinto is ready, and they're going to start in like two or three weeks or four weeks or something like that. So, so the goal is to make sure there's always a program going so students anywhere in Riverside County can get into a paramedic program at just about any time.
So it sounds like the three colleges are staggering their programs to accommodate...
That's the goal, so that we're not stepping on each other's toes when we go to put students in the clinical or field setting. So yes, that is absolutely the goal. The other goal is to reach out to our community partners and start pulling in candidates that way as well.
Yeah, and PACE gave us, PACE gave us the opportunity to get this going. If we didn't go through PACE, we literally would have had to wait till next semester to start. You know, hopefully, our goal will be to bring it back into the for-credit side and put it on a semi semester schedule, you know, as best we can with a 1,300-hour program. But PACE has just been, Veronica, oh my gosh, you know, just, that was just dropped on her and she just jumped, her and her team. It's just been, if we didn't have them, we would not be standing here today. You'd be getting this report about a year from now, so.
The other thing about PACE, the opportunities they have for, it's called responsive training funds. That was very helpful with any of the CTE programs that come onboard because you're looking at, and they alluded to it in their conversation, where you're trying to create a pathway and you're responsively coming up with these training programs based on what your community needs are or what your community partners are telling you. There's funds available, which helps to offset the student's financial accountability to the program. So PACE is amazing on that level as well, where they have funds that I couldn't get if I was in a for-credit setting, so.
How long is a program?
It's 13 to 15 months.
Thank you.
It's set up similar to, all of our programs at the Public Safety Academy are part-time. And the goal of that is to allow students to be able to continue to work, continue to support their families, meet those responsibilities they have at home, and still get the certifications they need to get into first responder careers. Otherwise, they have to go like 60 to 80 miles all the way up to Riverside or San Bernardino to receive that same training and certification. So we run all of our programs on a part-time basis. Yeah, 13 to 15 months sounds like a long time, but you're running a 1,300-hour program. And so the only way for those, if we didn't offer it in this format, most of these students couldn't, in fact, all of our students are working as pretty much EMTs right now in the field because you have to have 1,000 hours of EMT experience to get into the paramedic program. So they're literally working as EMTs three, four, five days a week, and then they're with us the other three, so.
You said that we're also working on making this a for-credit AA program as well. How far away are we from doing something like that?
Not far. So we, we have a couple of options. We can, for the not-for-credit side, we can articulate with Moreno Valley College, or we could do an addendum of understanding. As ours comes online, those students would filter back through the process to achieve their associate's degree. So ours is set to come on to the credit side in fall. It's either spring or fall of 2026.
And those students who are enrolled now, would they be able to still get their AA degree once it, like, I don't, I don't think it's retroactively the word I'm looking for, but would they still be able to get their AA degree after they're done with the program?
Correct.
Awesome.
Yeah, the curriculum that was pretty much developed by Lori and Professor Miller, that includes the AA degree in there. So it's submitted, it's, I think we're still running through approval process, but it's already in there. Lori and her team did a great job. They were way ahead of it.
And to put that into perspective, the students don't graduate from the paramedic program until spring of 2026, so that should align.
Something I would like the board, you made that presentation to the foundation, is explaining the importance of the cardiologist, the difference between the EMT and the paramedic. And if you could just kind of expand the difference, I thought that was amazing when you mentioned about this particular program.
Sure. So EMT is basic level emergency care. So they're still doing basic level assessments, basic level trauma assessments, they're splinting, they're bandaging, they're putting basic airways on. The paramedic, and this is all county specific, right? So we teach nationally to national standards, but county specific is they're doing advanced airways, they're starting IVs, they're delivering medications, they're, they're just doing a broader scope of practice and it's considered advanced life support for the community and any agency they're working for.
Thank you.
I have goosebumps a little bit when you see it happen. You know, it's pretty remarkable. And I know with the Public Safety Academy, I don't know if you have the same sense, but when I used to talk to chiefs, they always wanted to hire local. So the officers were from the community. And I wonder if you have the same sense when it's dealing with paramedics.
So it's an awesome story. So I would say probably 80% of our students are from the Coachella Valley. I used to be a firefighter/paramedic in the Coachella Valley. I worked at Station 79 in Coachella. A majority of our instructors are from the Coachella Valley, so.
Great. Thank you.
That gives me a new question here. Is this a program where we could promote outside of the Coachella Valley to attract students into it that are not in the, in V.C. and the other districts? You know, we don't want to snatch their students, but there's other possibilities.
So it's funny that you say that. So 80% of our students are from the Coachella Valley, and I have at least three students that are from Los Angeles County. And so they commute from Los Angeles County to our college because the program was no cost, so that offset their travel.
Yeah, and I literally was at a meeting of all the police academy directors and coordinators in the state yesterday down in Del Mar. And I actually had an inquiry like, did you just start a paramedic program? And how'd you do that, right? And that's from up out of Orange County. So the word is getting out and it's a very small community, that whole area, but once the word goes out that our program's up and running, which it's out there now, then, then it's, yeah, they'll be coming from everywhere. And hopefully, we'll convince them to relocate here, those who come from out, stay here in the valley.
And a comment on that too was that I was in one of the classes recently and I asked the class, how many of the students went to Indio? And only three of them raised their hand, but the rest of them were giving me bad looks. And I told them, well, I had heard there are two types of students in the Coachella Valley, those who want to be Rajas and those who are Rajas. And they didn't laugh either. So, but a lot of them were from, were from the area and they were very proud of the fact they grew up, grew up here and were serving, or taking classes at the paramedic program and their faculty were serving them. We're also from the valley, so really need experience.
Pretty cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know we're right at the 12 o'clock mark. I don't know when we need to break for lunch. Do we have?
We have more presentations, so if we could go 15 minutes?
So we have, we have a hard drop? So...
Go.
So we can break then and come back and do the one presentation?
Yeah, I think we're going to be breaking.
Going to break?
So we'll, do you want to go ahead and, is there any objection for, we go to lunch and we re-do our closed session and move it up on the agenda? Is that, any objection to that? Great. All right, I apologize, we're going to take a break.
It's all right. I can't hear you, so I came up and...
So we will be recessing to closed session at 12:00.
Well, actually, we're not. Okay, so we're going to take a break at 12:05 for 10 minutes. And then we will reconvene to closed session at 12:15 and return. All right, okay, all right. So they got it.
DDP, yeah. Give me one second.
And I want to know, and then another one that I might...
Thanks for the help.
Hologram, there's hologram state.
...
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, three minutes.
It's
Arnold just got back from San Francisco, so might be a little tired.
Yeah.
Yeah, via DC.
College's ACCJC accreditation project, working with standards teams to provide narrative development, refinement, evidence collection, and alignment support. I can report from this experience that the college community is a rich, is rich with dedicated professionals passionate about creating and implementing higher education programs, services, and spaces and experiences that prioritize the needs of the students. The department was honored to support the college community during this critical self-assessment process. Beyond ACCJC, the institutional grants department provided critical funding and partnership development to support staffing and subsidized childcare costs for the new Indio Child Development Center. Oh, I apologize. Thank you. A 1.3 million dollars in new funds were acquired to support these efforts. The department conducted eight specialized training sessions in 2023-24 with college schools and departments to educate the college community about the electronic grant forms, processes, and their associated policies, procedures, and rationale. In 2023, the administrative vice president tasked the grants department with tracking and managing restricted state categorical awards. In 2324, the college received more than 25 million in restricted categorical funds supporting a broad range of activities, which we will discuss shortly. The department is working collaboratively to finalize a quarterly restricted categoricals update report to project managers and facilitate timely expenditure submissions and drawdowns for these funds. Also in 2023-24, the grants department supported the development of 26 competitive grant proposals, requesting and acquiring 8.7 million dollars in awards from other funders and donors. As we continue to support fundraising towards student-centric innovations, we must strategically evolve to address changing environmental climates and needs. A lot has changed at the federal level since January, and new information arrives almost daily. The grants department is monitoring and reporting on daily federal actions and mandates with the potential to impact college, the college and our students. The college's work on these matters is guided by the California Community College Chancellor's vision of a higher education environment that engages community partners, promotes fair access to all, and implements strategies that seek out and acquire the best talent to facilitate that vision. Through this approach, we are and continue to be the change our community needs us to be. The grants department is currently working with 25 California Community College grants directors and others to track, assess, and report to our senior leadership the potential impacts of federal executive orders on community colleges and the students. Okay. One of my colleagues was with me this morning, I don't know if you saw her, but she is the Dr. Liliana Isles from El Camino College, and she has been one of my collaborating partners and wanted to be here this morning to see this presentation. But she'll be back shortly, she's not here now, she went out for lunch. Current impact areas of these executive orders include educational funding, diversity programs, immigrant rights, and gender rights. To mitigate federal grant program funding issues, the college requested drawdown of all remaining 2024-25 federally awarded funds as per the Uniform Grants Guidance Rule 2CFR 200.305. I am pleased to inform you that all federal funds have been received, and these programs will continue to operate through September. Additionally, the college has not received any award rescissions or modification letters from any federal agency. The good news is that the college's competitive grant portfolio contains a limited number of federally funded projects. As a preemptive measure, the grants department is currently conducting an internal survey to identify these activities which could be impacted by federal DEIA actions. The department will continuously update the superintendent president's office as things progress. Now, to the lighter side. Let's explore our grants work for 2324. I'd like to review how funds were allocated to support college operations and activities. I will start with restricted categorical funds, and will then move to competitive grant awards. So as you can see, we received a total of 34 million in new funding for 2324. Of that, 32 million was from the state, 900,000 was from the federal government, and 1.1 million is from the, from local funders, local and regional funders. Of the 26 competitive grant proposals submitted, 21 received awards totaling almost 9 million dollars. Revised budget allocations for 2023-24 categorical funds show that approximately 40% of these funds supported personnel costs, non-instruction, and fringes. Categorical expenditures on personnel totaled more than 10 million dollars. 22% supported essential support contracts and marketing costs, while 50% provided supplies, outreach materials, and other support services. An additional 14% went to student aid. For competitive grants, 55% supported personnel costs, while 22% enabled student aid, stipends, book vouchers, gas cards, and other financial support. College of the Desert is a student-centric institution dedicated to providing programs and services promoting student self-efficacy towards success. This year, I would like to tell this story through categorical and competitive grant allocations. As shown here, grant activities prioritized fair access and workforce partnership programs. As a community college and regional economic development partner, these public-private partnerships enable access and skill attainment, which are critical to regional growth. The second priority for grant activities targeted basic needs and scholarships. These activities created duality of student support, mitigating the financial barriers of daily life and academic costs, enabling students to focus on their educational goals. The third priority area focuses on creating soft and critical thinking skills towards success and transitioning students into pathways beyond College of the Desert. One program provides scholarships to COD students with four or more credits to help them complete their degree, while the others facilitate transfer and job exploration attainment services. The college's bottom-up approach to decision-making and problem-solving through grants generated improvements in 2023-24 include that the state funders highlight the college's basic need program as an example to follow. Specifically, the college core program combines leadership education with activities mitigating regional food insecurity. In 2024-25, the college's food pantries provided more than 254,000 pounds of food products to more than 15,000 students and their families. Through fair access programs, the college experienced significant increases across key student and employment performance indicators. As the VP of Instruction, Val Martinez Garcia generated an impressive 38% increase in dual enrollment engagement across Valley High Schools with an increased student headcount and an increased student headcount of 14.6%. We also have public-private partnerships providing transportation, and those were expanded during this time. Looking back on my past eight years, I think about the grant activities and the college's work on the count, the impact of that on the countless students who have found new doors open to them through higher education. When I arrived at College of the Desert, the college sought to forge a new path that all institutions would want to follow. By taking the road less traveled, creating an environment that walks the talk of an integrated planning approach, promoting access to completion for all students, helping our students succeed, and generating lasting positive change in their lives, I believe we are doing that. Grant activities are a critical component of creating spaces for growth and innovation, enabling faculty and staff to test ideas and practices we look forward to, we look forward to continuing our work to advance that institutional goal. Thank you, the grants office is always ready to help. Does anyone have any questions?
I'll start to my left and look at my colleagues and see if any questions are...
No questions on my end, just want to say thank you for the great work that you do. The work that you do is crucial to our day-to-day operations and the way that we're able to serve our students, you're able to, through the, these grants, we're able to close a lot of gaps that we would not be able to fill with our normal budgeting processes, so just want to thank you and your team for all the great work that you do.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate the kind words.
I have two words, wow, amazing.
Thank you so much.
My colleague is to the right, any comments or questions? Comments, questions? Okay, I want to say those last two slides tell the story, and they're very impressive. And I know there's a few data geeks around here, and those two slides, I think they tell you how you are providing access and support services. That's what was so beautiful about the slides, is when you really hone in, they're going directly to students and trying to make sure that the barrier, barriers are eliminated. And so, kudos to you, it's a great presentation, and I'm going to study those last two slides a little bit more, so I can understand them, so thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, just in closing, I've been talking to VP West about our grants office, the need for us to grow and expand it, especially as we look at diminishing funds coming from the state and/or threats by the feds, and so we're looking at alternative ways to expand the grants office, and Caroline's been a great leader over there in really keeping us in line during this time of uncertainty. She's providing me with daily updates, literally on legislative, legislation that's going through, works in the process, what interpretations are needed for us throughout the district to be able to respond to if needed at all, so I really appreciate her efforts.
I thank you for your support, this entire board, your leadership and decisive actions on our behalf are appreciated. And I think most of you know that my passion is for kids like me who grew up with nothing, who can become everything, and I want that for them, and I will handwalk them across this campus if they find me. And so, that's where I stand. And Chairman Kinaman, on the last two slides, in the words of my previous boss, "That was by design." Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to public comments, 21.01. Request to address the Board of Trustees regarding matters not on the agenda. Remote public participation is allowed and will be accepted in person by email to otp@collegeofthedesert.edu during the meeting and submitted for the record, or by using the raise your hand function by joining the Zoom link pursuant to the district administrative procedure 2345. Each speaker will be allowed a maximum of three minutes per topic. 15 minutes shall be the maximum time allotment for public speakers on any one subject regardless of the number of speakers at any one board meeting. At the discretion of a majority of the board, these limits may be extended. All comments must be submitted or brought forward prior to the end of the public comments section. As an additional note, this item is intended for members of the public who wish to speak regarding matters not related to the agenda. Irene, do we have any public comments?
Board Chair Kinaman, we did not receive any public comments.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item 22.01, future agenda items, Student Trustee Robles.
I have none at this time.
Thank you. Trustee Sanchez Fulton.
First and foremost, I want to thank Acting President Val Martinez for bringing up the program, future agenda items that I requested first and foremost, and something I would love to see is also about our micro homes, the affordability of students, and something that is so important for students is students' housing and affordability, and I would love a presentation on our, what Burt and the team are doing on the micro homes, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Meyer.
I would like a future agenda item, moving the ad hoc committee into a standing committee, a long-term standing committee, possibly call it the Board Continuous Improvement Committee, and bring that into the next meeting as a discussion and a motion.
No, okay.
So do we need a motion, or how?
No, no motion now.
I concur with Trustee Meyer, I'd like to see something like that on the agenda that will prove to the public that we're constantly working on improving as a board. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Oden.
Yes. I would just like for us to look for opportunities of cost savings and to increase our technological outreach with the Palm Springs campus because we will literally have three libraries within two blocks. Palm Springs is investing $39 million in their library, and so I think that we should, we have and will have, you know, a library at the campus as well, so I just think that we should look for opportunities of synchronism so that we don't duplicate the efforts, and maybe then that means that we can really do something state-of-the-art.
And then I don't have anything at this time either, and we are at item 25.01. And I will now adjourn the regular meeting of the Desert Community College District Board of Trustees at 1:10 PM, and thank you very much, everybody, have a great weekend.